Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available at the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and it's streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and Microsoft Teams webinar. This and previous council meetings video is available on the city's websites. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by asking, or by using the Ask Pasco app. All right, with that, if we get a call to order.
Thank you. Council members Barajas?
She is excused for tonight.
Thank you. Blaisdale?
Present.
Cotta?
He's also excused.
Thank you. Harpster?
Present.
Peralas?
Here.
Mayor Protem Grimm?
Here.
And Mayor Milne?
I am here. So with that, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
All right, so that brings us into item number four, which is the Colima-Pasco Association. We have some special guests with us, and we're going to start it off with some words by Stephen McFadden.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you this evening? We've, as COPA members, been very fortunate to come before you more than once to introduce you to a delegation and representatives from the state of Colima, and today is a really special opportunity, so I would like to give you just a really brief history. Former Mayor Matt Watkins and council approved a resolution to create a friendship and collaboration agreement with the state of Colima in 2019. In 2020, COPA, a nonprofit, was formed to bring the agreement and the relationship to life. In 2022, former Mayor Lance Barajas and Colima Governor Indira Vizcaino Silva signed the agreement, officially making this friendship and collaboration a full-time arrangement. In '23, a COPA delegation visited Colima with 60 community leaders. Among them were 30 members of the Colville Tribe who participated in cross-cultural engagement while in Colima with the indigenous people of Colima. Last year, Colima reciprocated with a delegation of 22 state leaders from all facets of Colima state government. And today, COPA proudly presents to you the 2025 delegation representing Universidad Pedagógica Nacional, Unidad 61. This is the university based in Colima that teaches the future teachers of the state of Colima and the country of Mexico. Today, we have 15 students, instructors, and volunteers for a week focused on education, and you will have the itinerary, I believe, for their week-long events. They've spent two days already at WSU Tri-Cities, and they will be spending a very long day tomorrow traversing all of Pasco School District's facilities, learning as much as they can and sharing what they know about the education process. We hope that you consider the invitation to join us at Cafe Vita on the 16th in the evening for a brief program and a one-hour meet and greet. And with that, please allow me to introduce Director Armando Aguilera and the delegates of the UPN.
Saludo al Honorable Alcalde David Meo y a los miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad.
I say hello to the members of the council of City of Pasco.
La educación es un acto humano que acorta las distancias y une voluntades.
Education, it's a human act whose short distance and join volunteers.
A nombre del gobierno del estado de Colima, de la Secretaría de Educación y de la Universidad Pedagógica Nacional, agradecemos que no reciban en este recinto. Agradecemos también a COPA el gran apoyo que hizo posible que estuviéramos acá.
In name of the government of Colima, the education, and the University Pedagógica Nacional, we really appreciate COPA, the big support that make us possible to this group of students and professors and volunteers are here.
Viajamos 2,500 millas para desarrollar actividades académicas entre estudiantes de la Universidad Estatal de Washington y estudiantes de la Universidad Pedagógica.
We have been traveled 2,500 miles from to get here to make possible this academic exchange between teachers, students, that were being in the Washington State University and with us who can change, we exchange academic words.
Su apoyo permite que nuestros estudiantes y profesores participen en un evento académico de clase mundial donde renuean estudiantes que han estado en Japón, Singapur, Brasil, México, y España, y favorece el intercambio y el enriquecimiento académico de los estudiantes de ambas universidades.
This academic exchange make us disjoin with students and professors who, which are increase our enrichment work, and we been participate in this academic event, was coordinated with the Washington State University. We been talking with students who travel to Japan, Singapore, Brazil, and Spain.
Nuestra delegación viene con grandes expectativas sobre la riqueza que implica el intercambio, porque en la educación nadie sabe más que todos juntos.
Our delegation comes with big expectations about the enrichment that involves this academic exchange because in education no one knows more than everybody together.
Por nuestro lado, trajimos un pedazo de Colima en una recreación cultural del Día de Muertos.
This time, we came, we came and also bring an cultural event, cultural program that involves the Day of Death.
Hemos compartido con otros docentes el resultado de nuestras investigaciones en el campo de la metodología educativa y en la forma como las universidades estamos formando en México a los futuros docentes.
Also, we've been changed investigation results in the methodology area of education and the way we are teaching our students to be ready to the, to be ready to the professional life in the education.
Tenemos una semana llena de actividades que ha implicado ya trabajar con la Universidad Estatal de Washington, la visita al Distrito Escolar, al Colegio CBC, reuniones para acordar líneas de investigación sobre educación en ambientes de migrantes, metodologías STEAM, y la forma como identificar y generar mejores prácticas docentes, en una palabra, como formar mejores maestros.
We have a big, we have a big program in this week that involves the visit of the Pasco District, the Washington State University, the CBC College, and also meetings to know investigation lines about education, and also have these programs for immigrants to know the STEAM methodology and in case just, yeah, to be better, to have better skills for the ones that are teaching.
Esperamos con esta visita tomar acuerdos sobre investigaciones binacionales y muy pronto tener conocimiento y un libro que implique el trabajo que estamos hoy iniciando con la Universidad Estatal, con CBC, y con el Distrito Escolar.
We have finally, this academic exchange bring us to write a book which we can share to the community, this line of investigation between the Washington State University, the CBC, and the Pasco District.
Detrás de esta visita, hay un gran esfuerzo de un grupo de estudiantes y maestros que decidieron perseguir un sueño, y con el apoyo de COPA se ha hecho realidad, abriendo más nuevos caminos para nuestros estudiantes que seguirán sin duda alguna buscando alcanzar sus sueños.
Behind this, this visit, this is effort from the students and the professors and also with the COPA support, so these students in the future could find new ways, new ways to be a better, be a better teachers and follow their dreams.
Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that presentation. I have some more words from Stephen McFadden.
Just request Mayor Milne if we could maybe get a picture of the delegates with the council members.
Yeah, we'd be delighted to. Let's kind of go down here if we get the council to come in front of the dais here and get a good picture.
I do my best. I hope you understand.
All right, well, thanks again, everybody, for coming out.
Enjoy your staff.
Unfortunately, there goes our whole audience. All right, so jumping to number five, verbal reports from council members. Do we have anybody on the council that did something exciting? Let's start off with Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Thursday, I attended the Benton Franklin Transit meeting. We only had one action item, but it is that time of year where we are going to do a little employee evaluation of our CEO, Mr. Thomas Droste, who is really, I think he's at 15 or 16 months now since he came on, and he's done a fantastic job. I mean, we always, there's always room. We all have strengths and weaknesses, areas of opportunity, but hard for him to get much less than a glowing review. He's done a really good job. Just with his ideas, his fresh ideas, you know, there's the express bus to the airport now and just streamlining. I mean, there was, there was kind of a lot of internal chaos. The, you know, the finance department was kind of in turmoil, and he has straightened a lot of stuff out and done a really, really good job, and it's really, really encouraging. I also attended with you, Mr. Mayor, and others, the TeraVita ribbon cutting for their Stage III, and really appreciate what the Broche family has done out there and the Jubilee Foundation, just allowing so many people, home ownership that it may be out of reach for, or just the affordable housing that was kind of what we're doing with Stage III, and then just building community out there. You could, you could really kind of see, you know, neighbors coming together, getting to know each other, and just really coming together as a community, and through all of it, they honor the Lord. I really appreciated all of that. Today, I was out at the Perez Plants grand reopening out on Ivy Road in the Clark Edition of Pasco, really nice family-owned business, a lot of beautiful plants. They're giving succulents away to all of the visitors, and I tell you what, some of their shrubbery and trees, if you need shade trees or anything, I mean, beautiful stuff out there. And they had nice, probably five-gallon rose buckets that were as cheap as I've seen anywhere, just really, really pretty flowers. So, yeah, give them a shout-out, Perez Plants. And then I attended my first Fireman Pension Board with you, Mr. Mayor, and good to kind of be immersed into that also. So, yes, busy week for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
As long as you're also at the Chamber and Lunch yesterday's lunch. Yeah, I've seen a lot of you, but I do appreciate you doing the TeraVita proclamation. That's your district, and so I was trying to give you the honor. And again, I appreciate you, Marina, that you did a good job, and again, appreciate you doing all the other stuff you've been working on. So, let's move over. Let's go with Councilwoman Blaisdale.
Thank you. Let's see, Friday, I actually got voted into the COPA Board as an official board member, and then, as you could see, all my COPA friends were here. I spent Sunday morning with the COPA delegation for breakfast, and then we had a barbecue on Sunday night, and I got to really interact with the students, and we laughed a lot and ate and just had a good time. They're a really good group of kids, and majority of the kids are learning early education, so, and they want to get citizenship to come and actually move here. So, that was exciting to hear them voice how much they like being here and how different it is from their culture to come here. And then Friday, I did, or no, yesterday was Monday. Monday, I did also attend the Pasco Chamber Candidate Forum, and there was quite a few people, there was about 100 people that attended, so that was nice. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for taking up the leadership role on COPA. Appreciate you taking that big step and time commitment and everything, so thank you for, thanks for taking my spot, so much appreciated. So, let's jump to Councilman Peralas.
Thank you, Mayor. I know a lot of it's just a repeat, but, yeah, I also attended the TeraVita ribbon cutting. It was really cool to see another phase, and I know our staff assisted with the chip funding, and so that was just kind of great to kind of see that all culmination of a year and a half worth of construction in that ribbon cutting yesterday. And I also attended the Pasco Chamber Luncheon Candidate Forum. It was, it was really nice. It was good to field questions. There's about 100 people. It was, it was great for the people who were there and some of the candidates who decided to show up. So, no, it was, it was a good time. Thank you.
You guys were definitely, you two were definitely answering a lot of questions, considering you two were the ones that were there, so tons of questions, but anyway.
You guys could help us. We're going to grill.
All right, so not seeing any other lights on, so let's jump to number six, items for discussion with opportunity for public comments. The public may comment on any topic scheduled for discussion, up to two minutes per person, with a total of eight minutes per item. If opposing sides wish to speak, then both sides receive an equal amount of time to speak, up to four minutes each side. So, we have number six, A Columbia Basin Veterans Center Presentation, and it's by our deputy city manager, Rachel Sedell.
Yes, I will give all of the time to Mr. Daher here to talk about our the organization that he's leading, and with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Daher to the podium.
There you go. Hey, it is so good to be here with you. I appreciate the invitation, or at least accepting my, my request to be here. And so, one of the things we like to do in the community is try to get out there, make sure everyone knows who we are and what we're doing. I think in some ways, the Columbia Basin Veterans Center, though it's so important, has been kind of kept a good secret for a lot of people, and we're trying to fix that. I do, before I start, also want to thank Jesse Rice and Parks and Rec. Their team has done fantastic. For the last couple of months, we've been meeting and preparing for Veterans Day, and thank you guys for your support of that. And really truly, I just want to say thank you to your team, and please give kudos to your, your staff that represent you well. So, I do have a presentation to go through. My goal is just to introduce to you what we do. A lot of you guys might know, we're right here in Pasco, if you didn't know. So, this is my first presentation to any of the city councils and stuff. I said hi and did my two-minute thing, but I'm trying to get on their docket, but our very own home gets, gets the full, full thing. So, please, as I go, if there's any questions, feel free to go with it. Are you guys gonna, do I just do it here? Do we do have a presentation? Oh, there you go. I see it. So, what we do, I'm Christopher Dare, and I am the new executive director. I'm from Nevada, and so I moved here four and a half months ago. Truth is, I didn't know what Pasco was seven months ago, so I know, I know, that's horrible, but I grew up in Vegas and then Reno, and I didn't even know what Tri-Cities was, so it's nothing personal. These guys recruited me to come and be here, and it's really been great. My wife and I have enjoyed it, and we're looking forward to getting to know everybody as we go. So, just a few things we want to go through as we kind of walk through this. If you didn't know, Columbia Basin Veterans Center is a nonprofit organization, and we are here to support our veterans, and we do a lot of different things. We do believe that our veterans aren't, when they come to get their benefits, it is part of their paycheck, it's part of what they went into service for. So, no veteran, and I say this if there's anybody in the room, or the thousands and thousands of people watching this on, on Zoom, if they're out there, do you not wait to come together to get the services, the benefits that you have earned? And so, we believe that 100%. Our Veterans Therapeutic Court, Housing, Community Outreach and Connection, and Resource Assistance are the main ways that we function, and I'll go through just a couple of those things for you. The Veterans Therapeutic Court, what we do is we come alongside those who find themselves in legal situations, and we bring mentorship, continued conversation, and ongoing support. One of the things that I think people need more than anything is support and connectivity and net around them, and especially when they walk through difficult times. And so, sometimes our veterans do have different PTSD-type situations, things they're walking through, and the court will deem that they can walk forward if they had mentorship around them. And so, we have volunteer mentorships who come alongside, and then we do things like the Coffee Bunker for the first Friday and third Friday, and then the last Saturday. It's just an awesome time to come together, and so we're doing that on a regular basis, and it's pretty exciting to see how much this has helped over the years. The other thing we have is housing assistance. Right now, I'm sad to say, we don't have a house in Pasco, but it's on my radar, but it doesn't matter, we serve the whole region, so it doesn't matter what city we're in. We have Kennewick Home, Richland Home, and my goal is to actually have apartment potential type thing or something here that we can take veterans that are in that situation and actually let them move forward into a stronger, stronger situation where it's not just low barrier. And so, that's something really important to us. We do a lot of work with temporary veterans. I believe no veteran should ever be homeless. I believe no one should be homeless, but definitely those who have served are in that capacity, our country. And so, we walk forward like that. And so, these are just some of the homes we have. It's called the Wagner Pfister House, and then this is our Richland Alexander House. And so, I'm sorry, this is the Kennewick House, the Alexander House, but it's pretty awesome what we have done, what's put together. I love that we get to serve these many, these men, it says two men homes, and we get to come alongside them and give them a place. So, we do a lot of community outreach and connection, and this is probably such a crucial piece to what we do. I think all of it is to really stand with our veterans and try to really stop any kind of harm they might do themselves or mental things they're walking through. One of the things that I've served on over the years and we're bringing to this area is there's a mayor's challenge to stop veteran suicide and a governor's challenge, and I've served on those boards for quite some time. And so, with that said, these kind of things help that, these kind of things, making sure they have a place to go, making sure they have the dignity around them, but also just connecting them to other people in their community. And so, for us, we work with all the veteran groups. We work with VFW, we work with American Legion. We are not, sometimes you'll find there are groups out there that kind of push each other around, trying to find the front row. We are all working together, there's no front row, we're all here for veterans, and so please know that, that when, if you have something you want to do in Pasco, we all together will walk with you and do that. There's, there's no difference in that. One of the things that I want to show you, and I can bring some to you guys' office and leave some if you're interested, but I wanted to make sure anybody in the room here, but then also anybody that's a part of watching online, is we have these signs that are going up for the month of November everywhere, and they are just to remind people, if you're a veteran, where to get the help you need, remind our community that we support our veterans, and remind our veterans that we support them, and then also how they can find us. I do believe that if we can take time and bring dignity to what's going on and a direction for help, it makes a big difference. I've seen this work, and this is something that other cities have done around the country, things like this. And so, we want to bring this, and it'll be in every city and every county, and so we have ordered 1,000 of them, and we have quite a few that we're still handing out. So, we'll bring them by your office, see if anybody wants one. I know that we have a lot of support on this. American Legion helped give finances towards this. Benton Franklin is giving some, the Benton Franklin Transit, so it's pretty awesome the support we've seen. And then Resource Assistance, as you know, there's no VA assistance type thing here to get people connected. We are the front door for that, and so we do have someone in the, from the VA in our office. We are not a VA office, we are a nonprofit, so everything we do, we have to raise money for and put together, but we do have a VA office inside of us, inside of our office, and then we also have the county that comes in and helps veterans find their resources as well. And so, we work with everybody in every situation, trying to create those kind of opportunities. We have some neat stuff on the way coming, but this is something that we're pleased with. Funded through grants, fundraising, it's just important people know we are not government, and I say that not because government's bad, but sometimes people think the government should pay for everything, do everything, and that, and we actually don't take a dime from veterans. They never get to pay us, we don't ask for that when they come in, but at the same time, when you see us doing a fundraiser, it's not because the government's doing a fundraiser, it's because we are not government, we are a nonprofit that's just in there to care and work with government entities and other community partners. Upcoming day, HLC will be sending invitations. With that said, is there any questions you might have? I'd love to share a little bit more about what we're doing and how you can be involved.
Sorry, I'll start with Councilman Harpster.
First off, appreciate you moving here from Nevada to take on this position, and we met and talked about that, and there's obviously a huge need, and you probably know the number better than me, but I think it's something like 18 veterans a day commit suicide. And that's, I think when I got out in 2014, it was like 14, and it's just continued to rise, and it continues to rise as, especially the large number of veterans from the Iraq and Afghanistan wars come home, and there's sort of this growing sentiment, it's war that we never should have been involved in, and feels a lot like the veterans coming home from Vietnam. And it's often, you know, forgotten that there's a lot of folks walking around with these issues, and to your point, connection is a really good start on solving that. You mentioned the vets of the Coffee Bunker breakfast, what, I saw it first and third Friday and last Saturday, but what time is it at?
That's at eight, from eight to 10. And we hang out, we have breakfast, and I, and I say that, we'd love community leaders to come stop by and say hi, so do know that. If you're a veteran, obviously. at the same time, when you see us doing a fundraiser, it's not because the government's doing a fundraiser, it's because we are not government. We are a nonprofit that's just in there to care and work with government entities and other community partners. Upcoming day, HLC will be sending invitations. With that said, is there any questions you might have? I'd love to share a little bit more about what we're doing and how you can be involved.
Sorry, off with Councilman Harpers.
First off, appreciate you moving here from Nevada to take on this position. And we met and talked about that. And there's obviously a huge need, and you probably know the number better than me, but I think it's something like 18 veterans a day commit suicide. And that's, I think when I got out in 2014, it was like 14, and it's just continued to rise, and it continues to rise as, especially the large number of veterans from the Iraq and Afghanistan wars come home. And there's sort of this growing sentiment, it's war that we never should have been involved in, and feels a lot like the veterans coming home from Vietnam. And it's often, you know, forgotten that there's a lot of folks walking around with these issues. And to your point, connection is a really good start on solving that. You mentioned the vets of the Coffee Bunker breakfast. What, I saw it first and third Friday and last Saturday, but what time is it at?
That's at eight, from eight to 10.
Eight to two.
And we hang out, we have breakfast. And I, and I say that, we'd love community leaders to come stop by and say hi. So do know that. If you're a veteran, obviously, they'll give you a hard time, whatever you served, the other guy didn't, and so they, they'll, they'll mess with you a little bit. But I do want to point out one thing. In this, in this region alone, in the last five years, you've had about 20 veteran suicides in this region alone. And with that said, they, a lot of times, these veterans are coming back or getting from what they just went through, and they're kind of just kind of hiding in the background. And I say that because people aren't, everyone just kind of goes on with their life, and they did this thing, and that, and so kind of really opening those doors of connection is really tough in a community that likes to look on their phones. And so it's, it's actually a different wave of, way of connecting. And so we have a lot of, a lot of work to do. And sadly, it's gone up to 20 veterans a day right now, is what the numbers are. With that said, we want to be there to help. We actually are going to start a counseling center inside of our place. Again, no veteran will pay for it, and we are doing all kinds of things to try just to help wherever we can.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Let's go to Councilman Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had two questions. How many, how many veterans does the Columbia Basin Veterans Center currently serve here in the city of Pasco?
We just did our numbers. We're probably around four to 5,000 a year that we serve. And that's in a lot of different capacities. Not all of them are needing resources. Some of them need a touch, some of them need this. We do have something, even our Veteran Stand Down that's coming down, our Veteran Resource Expo. We serve about 600 people that alone. And that's coming up on the 14th of November, if you want to come out. I think there's a flyer on that. So you actually have about 30 to 40,000. It's hard to know the count. I've seen different numbers right here in the region, which is quite high, actually. You have a very high population of veterans in this region compared to many. So a lot of them are down to like the 5% to 6% are veterans. Here, you have 10% to 15%.
Is there a need for city advocacy to acquire grants and, you know, other state funds and federal funds?
Yes, there is. And I say that, that working together, a lot of times, grant funds, especially anything that's outside in government, they want to see collaboration. So you've probably seen this in your CDBG grants and some of the other pieces. Collaboration is key. If you're doing it alone, they wonder why. And so as we work together and we show that we're walking hand in hand, it, it's important. That's part of why I've really challenged our VFW, American Legion, other people to one, show that we're walking together, that there's no separation there, and they're doing a good job. We're all working together. But it really, on the city side, but it sounds interesting. We really, I, I know for a fact that city really doesn't have a lot of money to put towards these kind of things. It just doesn't really, what's there. But what I think we can help more than anything is from city leaders, is connecting us to people who care about this and walk with us. And so when I, when I say yes, it's not necessarily that we're here saying, hey, write us a check. I actually know government pretty well in the sense of city life and what that is. I know there's not a lot there. And so when the community asks, what are you doing for veterans? You can, there's a lot that you can do that doesn't require a dime, but a little bit of your time, and maybe a little bit of energy.
Good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I know in my life, I have my oldest star, we have our oldest daughter and the youngest daughter, both are serving, one's still serving, the other one got out. And I know she's talked about things that have been difficult to adjust, back to civilian life. What would your recommendation be? You know, she's got a job, she's going to college. But if she still says, say spends more time in her room than we would like, what, what kind of advice would you have for her to, to get back out and, you know, make more friends versus just, she says everybody's too young at college. So do you have any advice?
Well, it's interesting. I, I, I find a lot of people in this age bracket of 25 to 40, that is that people are either too old, too young, or think they don't care. It's kind of one of those pieces. And I, and I would say is find one of the niches that we're going after. We have a ladies' night out that, just for ladies, just like that, that can go out and hang out, and they just did an escape room, you know, kind of thing. And they, they do these kind of things, and it's almost creating a relationship on accident. That's a lot of what needs to happen today. And that's part of why, if you see the list of things we create, it's these moments of time. But it does require people to step out a little bit. And I say, find those safe zones that you can be who you are and grow and, and step in. And so relationship is key. If you're doing it alone, it's important, it's important you find help with that. The other thing I just say is, I'm real big on veterans on mission. You know, people who served and continue to serve, they stepped in because they wanted to serve our country, or were running from something, but most of them wanted to serve our country. And with that said, they're not done serving our country. They get home, and it's not done. And so one of the things we're creating is moments where they can step into the community. Like, we're going to actually, once a month, any veteran out there can come and help me clean up the memorial that's over here. Or we can do things in the community. We do Second Harvest four times a year for everybody in the community in Pasco, and they come through. So for us, veterans on mission is really key, and I think that's something I would say to anybody who's finding a place of need.
Okay. Well, I do plan on network with you more and go to one of your events, so it's still on my, my list. We've been very busy.
It's all, it's all good. Well, and that's the thing. So you know, we're not going anywhere. I'll keep knocking on your door and bugging you a little bit here and there. And we'd love to have you around and be a part of what we're doing. We're, we're, one of the, the one challenges that I throw out there to think about is this region, because of the way it works together, I think there's wisdom of creating something that would have all the cities and the counties think about having a group who helped do group think for everybody, where when we talk about collaboration, it's not what I did in Pasco or Kennewick. And right now, we kind of have that, but for you all to agree to that, it wouldn't cost you a dime, and you don't even have to an official meeting. It could be just something that says, hey, we're gonna officially, we're gonna, in a sense, really come together and think about this. So that'd be one of the things that, since I've been here, we've been trying to create, but it would sure be easier if it came from people who lived here longer than me.
All right. I appreciate that. And also, my wife's in the audience. If you want to give her the sign, or if you have more, we can definitely post it in our shop.
Would you like, I can bring, I have some, can I put five or six in the back?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. But yeah, I'll definitely put one in the window. And again, we'll touch base with you later and go to one of your events, and I'll try to get my daughter more involved, so.
Thank you again for your time, and truly, thank you so for your help. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. All right. So that's going to move us. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this?
I'm really glad I came tonight, because I was unaware of this program. I worked in the VA Medical Center Multi Care Unit in Walla Walla for several years. It was the nursing home hospital and ICU. I responded to blue codes, cleaned the bodies of our fallen veterans, and was often the one to close the door in the morgue. I was, had the honor of caring for two prisoners of wars. My father's friends, I heard stories of them coming and still now having problems after Vietnam War and coming back. I've seen the sacrifice of close, and I can tell you that they deserve far more than they have received. Programs like these, these services, their lifelines, our veterans gave everything for this country. The least we can do is give them dignity, care, and the voice that they really need. And I'm really happy that Tri-Cities is going to have a new building, or I think it's a hospital, I believe, because traveling clear to Walla Walla is really inconvenient. We're driving at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, we'd have to take them. And yeah, they're just not getting the support that they really need. They do have the service animals, but you are having to scream and fight, even respite care. People are taking care of their loved ones. They need help. Even my dad, who was not a veteran, my mom would just, at the end of his life, just take him for a day. Can you please take him for a day? She loved him, but it gets very exhausting taking care of these people over and over. So yes, I feel like we do need to support this. I, the, there's just so much that they are going through that you just don't see. So yes, I'm very grateful for this program. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else in the audience like to make a public statement? All right. Well, let's move on to six B, which is introduction of water and sewer bond ordinance. And we got interim Director Garcia.
Good evening, Council. So tonight, we are introducing an ordinance to refinance an existing water and sewer bond. So just some background on that. Back in December of 2015, the city issued water sewer bonds for 14 million for several projects. And under that agreement, the first time that we can call those bonds or refinances, December of 2025. So we've reviewed the market conditions and worked with our financial advisor and bond counsel to determine if it's worthwhile to do that. And at this time, it looks like if we refinance about 10.6 million of those bonds, we are projecting about 850,000 in savings, based off of lower interest rates, as well as being able to release around 750,000 in funds that are currently required to be restricted as a kind of a backup savings under the current agreement. So overall, there's some benefits to the utility funds if we are able to refinance. So this ordinance allows the finance team to move forward with the bond process and get us to refinance in December, which is when we can, the soonest that we can refinance that loan. And there's just some parameters that finance has to follow, which is that the new bond can't be more than 11 million. The interest rate can't be more than 5.5. And overall, we have, we would want to save at least 3% of the total debt savings. So overall, at the way the market looks now, we are well below that, but that's just the parameters in case conditions change. So overall, we're planning on bringing this back next week if there's no questions or concerns, and that will allow us to be able to finalize this issuance in December. With that, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Sounds real good. Let's start off with Councilman Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. How certain are, are you in regards to saving that 850,000?
So that's, we look at the market very often, and we have a, a very strong team of financial advisor and a bond counsel team that is evaluating that. And actually, when we first started looking at this, it was close to 600,000. And as of last week, it, it actually increased to 850. So it's, it's monitored very often, and especially as we're getting close to the date that we go to the market to sell, it's, we're looking at it a couple of days before, and even that morning, we are on the calls starting at 6:00 in the morning. So it's, we are, and if it, if it's not worthwhile, we will pull it back. So.
When you say that those other reserve funds are unrestricted, does that mean it stays within those enterprise funds, or you can use them for anything?
No, it stays in the.
It stays in there? Okay. So what would those be used for?
To help with water, water sewer operations.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to point out, 850,000 isn't an immediate savings. It's savings over the remaining life of the bonds.
All right. I'm not seeing any other council lights on. So do we have anybody in the audience that'd make, like, make a comment on this issue? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right. Well, it looks like you're off the hook. Thank you, Director Garcia. Jump to six C, which is resolution project acceptance Highland Park South Side Landscape. And I'll go ahead of Director Jesse Rice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you, I have a resolution for consideration for project acceptance of Highland Park South Side Landscape Project. This project ties in with our Highland Park updates, including restrooms and some other amenities that we just wrapped up and are planning a future ribbon cutting with. So you hear about, more about that project as well. But tonight, we're focusing on the landscape project tied into that. So along with this project, we recognize the need to complete a missing sidewalk segment on the south side of the park, provide ADA access to the visiting bleachers, the main football field, and just remove some unsightly areas of weeds. So last December, city council approved $100,000 for this project as part of the CIP-approved budget. Spring, we went through a, our fee process, and ultimately awarded a contract to ESF Solutions to perform that work. And then that work was performed June through August, and is now completed. Here are some pictures of that work, where the sidewalk is placed and poured, including a retaining wall to hold up the, the slope that had been sloping down previously covered with weeds. The concrete and an ADA access to the visiting side bleachers. And then, let me scooch this over so we get a better look at this one. And then ultimately, the set of stairs and the, and the ramp up into that area as well. So improving the overall visual, visual of that area, as well as the park and neighborhood. So, scooch back here. Total budget, I'm gonna keep moving this around here. There we go. Total budget from REIT funding was $100,000. Project expenses, including construction and design, came out to be $79,000, just about $80,000. So project is under budget, which I'm happy to report. So this evening, staff is recommending the approval of the resolution, accepting the work performed by ESF Solutions. And then, of course, the alternative, if not at the, or if not at the next upcoming meeting, is we continue to hold retainage and work on resolution of any concerns council has on the work performed by ESF Solutions, but there's none identified by staff at this time. With that, is there any questions or anything I can provide more details on?
Looks like we're gonna start off with Councilman Blaisdell. Has a question?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. This looks amazing. So very nice job. I've seen, been on this field for a long time, growing up, and to see this, it's long overdue. So nice job.
I appreciate that. And I will throw a shout out. Brent Kabalik, our Recreation Manager, is not here tonight. He is at a city teams convention, but he did prepare all three of these council reports and led the majority of these next three projects. So I will make sure he understands that. But thank you for the recognition.
Yeah, before I got on council, I was a coach with Pasco Youth Football. And so I know these fields very well. We always were at Highlands Park for practices and games on Saturday. And so this looks amazing, much needed improvements. So I appreciate your staff putting this together. And yeah, it's, I can't wait to go out there and check it out. It looks really nice. So thank you for that. Not seeing any other, I guess we have Councilman Prowls.
I was gonna say, yeah, same thing. I remember parking right there and pushing up my stroller up that hill with my daughter. So that looks amazing. That's great that we made ADA compliant.
All right. Thank you for that. Do we have anybody in the audience who'd like to comment or make a statement? Looks like a no on that. So thank you, Director Rice. We appreciate that. So let's go on to six D, resolution project acceptance for the Burton Boulevard Soccer Complex Field Lighting. And again, Director Jesse Rice.
Thank you, and good evening again. This resolution for consideration is for project acceptance for the Boulevard, our Burton Boulevard Soccer Complex Field Lighting Project. A little bit of background on this. In 2022, city council requested a $1.1 million legislative, from, $1.1 million from state legislation for field improvements at the Burton Soccer Complex. July 2023, we were awarded $727,000 after 3% state administrative withholding. We came back to city council earlier this year for approval of purchase of that equipment through a Musco Sports Lighting, after the installation of five fields worth of sports field lighting at the soccer complex. Summer 2025, we were able to get that project started. And in September 2025, we were able to open up and start lighting for public use out at the Burton Soccer Complex. Here are some examples of that lighting. Again, this is LED lighting. We lit five fields. Due to advancements in technology, you can kind of see that the lighting only lights up the field. It's very dark in the backside, so there's no overshadowing into the neighborhood, which is an important part for light pollution. So appreciate that. But it provides a very bright lit surface, particularly now that it's getting darker earlier. Little bit of the project funding source. So again, we have the $727,000 from the city council request. We used another $1 million from our LTGO bonds, which have already been secured. That totaled 1.7 million, combined with the installation, the project retainage tax. We came in just about $40,000 less than the proposed project total. So another one have to report on that. So with that, we do recommend approval of the resolution, accepting the work performed by Musco Sports. The lighting is working. Staff are able to program it, operate it, and turn it on and off as needed. So the next steps would be to release the retainage withheld to that contractor, or again, if unhappy with their work, we can continue to hold the retainage in that project. Any questions related to this resolution or the overall project that I can answer for you?
Well, I'm not seeing any lights, but I will say, I love to see these projects get done. I know when I was coaching, there was times where we didn't have lighting at Highlands, Highland Park. And there was times where kids get hurt, because, you know, you can't see what's going on, and they hit each other, and next thing you know, two kids run into each other during a practice. So I know you might not get kudos from everybody, but as a former coach, I really do love that you guys go the extra step, make sure that there's lighting, because it is safety. And again, I don't think a lot of people realize how much time, how much money goes into getting lighting on fields, but it really does. It helps the coach, helps students, helps kids. And again, it promotes sports, which is something that's very important for our community. So again, big kudos to you and your staff. And again, having things under budget is something that this council loves to hear as well. So thank you for that. And I'm not seeing any. thank you for that and I'm not seeing any lights. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment or have any not seen one on that? Alright, so we are going to go to six E which is resolution and ordinance Road eighty Park acceptance of grant amendment of capital budget and purchase agreements and again this is the Director Rice show here so please fire away.
Very good, thank you. Uh so this one's uh the 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 last two were finishing up projects this one's for starting a new project that we're excited to continue to move forward with that Road eighty Neighborhood Park. Um again prepared by Brent Kabalik who's not here but a lot of work went into this project and this presentation so I appreciate his time in this. Um so Road eighty Neighborhood Park is located on Road eighty and uh Massey Drive just north of Chilwana High School. Uh the city had owned five acres next to Three Rivers Elementary um part of the purchase from PSD in November uh two thousand nineteen um through a cooperative agreement uh two acres of the park are inside the school uh play yard area uh three acres remain outside those are the acres we're gonna be talking to this evening and that cooperative agreement the school district installed the curb gutter and fencing uh irrigation and then continually mows that whole section of park which leaves the city responsible for playground equipment once it's installed. Um so for the overall Road eighty Neighborhood Park currently we have a project funding of nine hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Um it is a CIP City Council approved project however at that time we weren't aware of a legislation appropriation grant we'd received of almost five hundred thousand dollars so lots of moving parts in this evening I'll I'll work through to get us to the end so. Um but we did receive that money and our contract was finalized at October third uh so just a couple weeks ago. Um in alignment with that using that total budget funded uh we have worked with uh Great Western Recreation which is a uh turnkey installation through our uh purchasing cooperative which allows us to purchase directly um to come up with a design for that park based on the amount of funding available. Uh so the current recommended design as part of the purchase agreement we're presenting tonight will include a half court basketball court our first outdoor pickleball court uh picnic shelter a two and a half through five year old playground uh five through twelve year old playground drinking fountain and a small sled hill so. Um and then some of those other amenities continued we have the four swing set including one of the adult child interactive swings as displayed in the screen walking path um since it's a neighborhood park just a portable restroom shelter and then benches and trash containers. Uh here's a conceptual uh design of what that will look like. Um and again we're making the proposal uh right now October twenty twenty five um if we get our purchase agreement in we can get lined up for a February through June install with a planned ribbon cutting and tree planting event. Hopefully mid to twenty twenty six uh following the completion of all those items. Um so we do have a recommendation from staff is to approve the resolution authorize city manager to sign the purchase agreement. Um additionally because our original project had only included a grant amount of up to a hundred thousand dollars we're asking you to approve an ordinance to increase that a grant amount to the amount that we're actually awarded which is the four hundred ninety nine thousand five hundred fifty dollars. And then also approve uh the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign agreement with uh Great Northern Recreation proposal uh for the actual purchase and installation of that equipment. So due to the multiple moving parts of this the grant the additional funding and some other options there's a lot of alternatives and impacts for council to consider and I apologize I think Brent was really going to town I think we have five different alternatives here so. Um but you could you know of course do not approve the grant but build the park which would use you know if uh we'd we'd use lesser amount of money um we could approve the grant but not increase the budget so we just use that extra hundred thousand dollars we initially anticipated. We could approve the grant increase the budget but not approve the actual purchase or that current conceptual design as uh presented by Great Northern Recreation. Do not build the park it's probably gonna be an unpopular one but we're gonna throw it out there. And then uh authorize additional park development funds to expand the scope so Brent's really hoping here that maybe you want to give us some more money of the park development fund so we're swinging all directions here this evening council so. Um so with that um again our suggestion is to follow through or to as as presented but you know I'm here to entertain any of those other alternatives or answer questions or get you some additional information if that would be helpful.
Alright, well thank you for that presentation thank you for the the five options of course I would like to see it's done and uh pay for the install of the playground equipment that would be my druthers on this we got uh one grandkid and hopefully a second one come February so I know they would love to see the the two or you had two things for our real younger kids and a little bit older kids and our youngest grandkid is going on two so uh we could it's close to our house so we could definitely use that so. Love to see it be built love to see it happen but uh let's go what uh what does the council think on this or anybody have any comments or questions for Director Rice? No, so.
Alright, well it'll come back next week on consent and I look forward to having you out for ribbon cutting sometime mid to late next year.
Alright, I'd love that so thank you thank you for the presentation. So let's go on to item or do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment or not seeing anybody right now so once twice three times alright so let's go on to six F which is resolution supplement to professional services agreement for Consort North America Incorporated for design services for the Sylvester Street Overpass Pedestrian Bicycle Adjec- Bicycle Access Projects and this is gonna be from our Public Works Director Maria Sarah.
Good evening Mayor and council members that was a very long title so I apologize. Uh this project is the bridge bridge project that will connect east and west Sylvester corridor uh with pedestrian and bicycle facilities uh basically completing that gap that exists on the crossing of three ninety five right now the existing bridge is too narrow to allow for pedestrians and and bicycles to cross three ninety five in a safe way and so this project um as proposed will build a a bridge that will be placed right adjacent to the existing bridge it will also extend the pathway to connect to the pathways that were recently built on either side of the free um sorry on the west side of the corridor and then connecting to sidewalk that is existing um and the bike lanes that are that are existing on the east side of that corridor. Um there will be lighting and other things so as you may remember this project was actually uh funded through two state grants. Um we had just under four million dollars to design and construct this bridge but before we could move forward with a full design of the bridge it is required when crossing a state facility that we have an analysis of the best solution for that bridge so we did that we went ahead and entered a contract with Consort they perform an analysis on alternatives of bridges the two alternatives are shown there there's just a few differences um on what type of materials we're using and whether there's a pillar in the middle or not. Uh ultimately the cost was very similar for both but we opted for the alternative that had the lowest um maintenance cost and also that was easiest to install with less disruption to traffic on three ninety five. And these solutions were discussed with DOT and that was the preferred option so that is a four point four million dollar bridge for construction. So with that and this is what it would look like it would have no intermediate pillar is a metal uh single span bridge that is installed and then of course the embankments on either side. This is very technical I'm sorry I should just move this forward so what we are showing you is a supplement to our existing consulting services to allow for the continuation of the design now that we have selected an alternative and uh continues through the bidding of that project and this would be this work would be performed by Consort. Um uh you're seeing the items that are included includes permitting the final design the support during bidding uh some analysis on on any traffic signal modification to accommodate that uh connection with the existing eastern portion of the corridor and then of course project management and the support during bidding as we mentioned. There's a lot of numbers in this slide but uh what we're showing you is we have enough funding to perform this amendment and continue the design forward and then we have our construction phase partially funded at this time. The cost for the bridge either alternative evaluated was higher than what we had estimated I think there are some impacts uh from the time that we prepared our application to now. Um and some of the constraints of the site where it's maybe harder to build that bridge because there's existing infrastructure and existing buildings nearby. So the plan for this project is to continue the design and while we are continuing the design should you approve this amendment we would continue to pursue uh grant funding we hope for state funding to to have the regulations be similar to the ones that are exist- existing in this project but if we need we would also pursue federal funding as needed to be able to make this project happen. Again we have just under four million dollars of federal of state funding right now and we would need about two point three I believe additional to be able to be fully funded for construction. Again one more time the cost of the design services is uh within the existing uh funding that we have received for the project. And with that I am happy to answer questions you may have on this.
Alright, well thank you for that presentation. Uh I know since I I drive by that and go over that bridge usually I guess there almost every day I have seen quite a lot of people walking on it which again is very extremely narrow. Um so I do know this bridge would get used probably a lot more than the the bike paths on the Sylvester. Um so I do believe this is a great project and with that I think we're gonna start off with uh Mayor Pro Tem Graham who loves bridges and uh so let's uh see what he has to say.
Thank you Mister Mayor and thank you Director Sarah for bringing this back yeah one of the very first emails I ever received on council was from a high schooler who was walking across this bridge and just a lot of tension about you know being hit in the dark in the rain it is very narrow um kind of what you're you're talking about there so I see the importance of this I do have a couple follow up questions Director Sarah. I I know you're waiting on some grant funds when when were you thinking this might be completed?
So we would be able to finish our design during twenty twenty six and be able to bid the project and should funding be received throughout you know between now and the end of twenty twenty six we would be able to be in construction in twenty twenty seven. This project is a single uh construction season project so likely by the end of twenty twenty seven it would be available for use.
Awesome, thank you and I looked through your your presentation there is it on the north or the south side of the overpass?
It is on the south side.
So the Blue Bridge side of it?
Yes. Yes, had to think about that, yes.
Okay, no perfect um so is this going to what's this gonna do I heard you talking about intersection improvements possibly to the east I assume you're talking about twenty eighth and Sylvester there um is that just to connect the the pedestrian intersection there or are we gonna see the potential fix for the uh right turn lane there um going on to twenty eighth eastbound Sylvester?
Yes certainly the fix would happen either with this project or before the project um and then any adjustments are truly to ensure that we have an adequate connection especially for those bikes that need to come off of the bridge and get in a bike lane that is on the opposite side or they're coming from the they're coming from you know in the east side on a bike lane and need to cross Sylvester in order to get on the bridge so that that movement is one that needs to be accommodated and we need to confirm that 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 it is adequate and safe for that movement to occur uh and so timings will be potentially looked at in the in the signal programming and I don't believe there are any obstacles um that would have to be removed but certainly that analysis will include that if there is any a push button that needs to be moved so that that light would change for those bicycles.
Okay, thank you and yeah don't feel you ever need to apologize for being nerdy that's I think what you get paid for is to be an engineer do all those things and we appreciate it just one last thing because this is the kind of feedback we hear from uh the the public sometimes and maybe someone else on staff might be better suited to answer but I know we hear a lot of you know pushback about everything that's going on in Broadmoor or you know the 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 gridlock we have in other areas of West Pasco traffic and I know we're fighting hard to get that and we're really close to getting that new overpass out there and everything but you know what what would we tell the public or what what should the public know about why you know this is uh you know getting the attention that it is for for pedestrians when the the average citizen may look all throughout the city and say hey why aren't we doing this instead?
So there is a combination of factors uh one of those is that the this project was identified as a deficiency in the corridor in our safety analysis. Uh we had crashes in the corridor and so that triggered the improvements that were recently completed and so this is effectively a gap in the corridor so we have infrastructure that is serving well either side of the bridge but we have now kind of landed in putting those vulnerable users to travel in an unsafe location so we want to to continue this project actually at some point it was considered to be a single project was too big to be funded so strategically we we pursued funding for either side of the corridor first and then came back and pursued funding for this bridge which we were successful at securing funds. Um so there's that and then um this is consistent with uh city policy as far as having complete streets and ensuring that we are accommodating all users there is a series of um nearby residents that um based on the statistics and the demographics are not able to utilize uh their own vehicles and rely on pedestrian and bicycle transportation for their day to day needs and so this bridge is really serving those needs. Um we did have emails from the public and there was support for this project so that's how this project gained attention uh from funding agencies and at the state level in general this project was part of our legislative priority a few years back and then it received funding through two competitive programs.
Okay, and I appreciate that and yeah because it is really only one of two corridors east west at least that are multimodal that would allow pedestrian and bicycle you know not counting the one eighty two which is the state highway and everything like that I guess you could kind of throw in Argen and everything like that but no it's it's good for the sake of the public to you know just understand it more so thank you very much thank you Mister Mayor.
Alright, it looks like we have our city manager wants to make a comment.
To help us in answering Mayor Pro Tem Graham's question you know Pasco's at an interesting crossroads right now as you continue to grow but you also have aging infrastructure and so a lot of this infrastructure was is either beyond its life capacity or wasn't designed for the volume that you're experiencing now as Pasco continues to grow. And it'll be important I think uh as a city organization and particularly you as a council making decisions on behalf of the public as a whole is balancing new growth with improving and maintaining the old infrastructure. And particularly in some of these older parts of Pasco some of those were built out in the county were in city limits and then annexed in and so they may have been built to an even lower design standard than what the city would require or necessitate and so we're trying to balance all of these and as we're taking opportunities to um improve and renew this infrastructure we're looking at current best practices which includes multimodal pedestrian safety bike safety vehicular safety because as towns get bigger having those multimodal aspects in a safe way is important to the movement and flow of citizens throughout the community. So that would be my answer to your question.
Alright, and along those same lines so this might possibly once you go over the Blue Bridge coming into Pasco you would this be like kind of the first bridge that you would see arriving on the road there so is this gonna be like more of a prettier bridge or is it just more like just functional bridge how would you kind of describe uh the bridging or onwards?
Um I think beauty is in the eye of the beholder. It's beautiful. It's a beautiful structure uh let me oh I may I may not have this in in the slides uh queued up let me see. Oh you you switched the slide it's okay so um it's gonna be metal and it's gonna look like the metal that that gets um weathered uh which is a which is a beautiful look for for a bridge and also it reduces maintenance which is also beautiful for those that have to do the maintenance on top of three ninety five with lots of traffic. Um it will likely hold the signs that uh are currently on attached to the existing bridge so those will have to be be brought forward but I think there is an opportunity for some place making in the bridge and so we we will look at opportunities as we are designing the project to have at least the the place reserved for you know welcome to Pasco sign or anything that that would be of interest of the council.
Okay, well thank you love to see a a nice sign that says welcome to Pasco. Alright, so I'm not seeing any other uh comments or questions so anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment uh question on this topic going once going twice going three times alright. Well that makes us jump to item number seven which is miscellaneous council. Well, that makes us jump to item number seven, which is miscellaneous council discussion. Do we have anybody on the council that wants to make a comment? Not seen anyone. Harold Stewart, do you want to?
Yeah, a couple of matters real quick. I do want to do a brief presentation again with regards to health insurance benefits. But before I do that, I do just want to remind the council and the public that here in a couple of days, October 15th, our irrigation system will be closed and winterized for the season. So if you have your sprinklers set to continue running, they won't have water starting October 15th. And also a good time to probably have them blown out so they don't freeze over the winter time and create damage over that season. So there is information available on our city website and our social media if the public would like to see more information in detail about that. But just a public reminder with regards to that. So again, I wanted to follow up on some of the presentation and discussion from the last meeting with regards to our health insurance fund and where we're at. I'll go through some of these initial slides pretty briefly because these are things that you saw in the last presentation. But at the end, I do have some potential alternatives for consideration for council, hopefully so that you can ask questions and be prepared to make a decision next week with regards to this because time is becoming of the essence with this decision. So just a reminder again here, background overview. We do have a self-funded medical plan. There's a different variety of medical plans that you can provide. For all intents and purposes, for an organization of this size, self-funded is the best option and alternative. It's usually more cost effective. And it allows the organization to benefit most financially from that, particularly from good years, instead of letting some other entity benefit from that financial investment. Again, this is a pro and a con that there has been no premium increases since 2014. Having helped manage health insurance programs longer than this period, I would say that that is highly uncommon to not have any increases over that period of time. Particularly that most organizations were seeing double digit percentage increases in some years over that period. So historically, you've had fairly sustainable claims. You've had healthy reserves over the years. Over the last five years, there's been some overlapping factors that have kind of created the perfect storm, so to speak, that have created this situation. And I'll have a slide here in a minute to go over that a little bit more. In the meantime, given the circumstances that we're in now, we've considered several urgent mitigation measures and factors. And in order to get it in compliance with state law, that's why we're asking for the six and a half million dollar loan, internal loan, to refinance this program. And then we've structured this to go forward that it'll be more sustaining, hopefully not repeat this issue into the future. There will be a significant increase in premiums. Just a reminder that the city, as the employer, pays about eighty-seven percent of premiums on behalf of employees. And then employees see that other thirteen percent. And that varies across the organization depending on union contracts and some of those kinds of things. So we do have some employees that have no cost at all with health insurance premiums has been negotiated in union contracts. So it varies across the board. Here's a little bit of a timeline. I know there's some questions at the last meeting on how we got here. So 2014 was the last time that the organization saw an increase in premiums. We had some of the challenges of COVID-19, which really kind of minimized a lot of the claims. Not quite as much health insurance usage during that timeframe. I think a lot of it had to do with quarantining and those kinds of things. And that helps on a lot of health and health issues throughout the community. 2022, 2023, you see more utilization as we come out of COVID. And then you also start seeing inflation pressures that we're seeing everywhere on everything. But this also includes the medical fields. In February 2024, apparently you guys had a cyber attack. That created the inability to process some claims for a period of time. Then also in August of 2024, your third party administrator declared bankruptcy. I would say that's also very uncommon. In my almost twenty years, I have never seen a third party administrator go bankrupt. So that is a very uncommon event. 2020, October 2024, the city found a new third party administrator. In January 2025, we had some stop loss issues that were corrected. And then in 2025, going back to that cyber attack in February 2024, the backlog jam began to break free with regards to claims, which resulted in basically paying previous claims and current ongoing claims at the same time. And you have a reserve fund to help in times of emergency. Unfortunately, the combination of the cyber attack and the transition of the TPA created more pressure on your reserves than what was there and available. And it caused those reserves to go negative. And here's just another summary of the drivers that created the situation that we're currently in. Again, that's the COVID rebound, medical and pharmacy inflations. One piece here that's new that wasn't on the previous slide is you had significant workforce growth. I think you added almost a hundred employees since 2014 to the organization that came in and added more lives and claims on your insurance policies. You had the TPA disruption and bankruptcy. Running claims, distorting budgets and those kinds of things and stop loss misalignment. The changes that staff has worked on, and I want to thank Roselda and Sarah and Recha for their work here over the last couple of weeks, as well as our new third party administrator. They've done a great job in reviewing through and identifying the financial risks and situations and our approach to help minimize that. And I'm not going to go over these again because it's kind of repetitious here, a little bit here on all the things that I just talked about. These are some of your regional benchmarks on how our insurance compares across the different employers in the region. And we do want to try and keep our health insurance competitive. I do want to say here too that, you know, one of the differences between private sector and public sector working, we can't pay the wages that most people can earn in the private sector. But we do try to balance that out with stable employment and quality benefits, which mainly transitions into health insurance and retirement. So one of the reasons that many people work in public service as opposed to the private sector is for the use of these benefits. So not providing these benefits will create significant morale issues. It will transition into potential turnover and lack of retention of employees to other organizations that are providing these benefits in a much more affordable and sustainable way. So I think it is important that we get a handle on this. And I do believe that the plan that staff has worked together to present to council for consideration is the alternative that balances all of those out. I do want to talk about a few options, though. One option is that option one is a state funded pool. Well, it's a state pool of employers and local governments throughout the state that all come in and participate in here. That option would actually be more expensive than staying as a self-funded. And then also that group, that organization, the AWC, would benefit from any financial windfalls that come in in good health insurance years. Now, as a participant in that pool, the city would benefit somewhat from it, but not completely. And we're also limited to the health insurance plans and designs that AWC creates. And we don't have the ability to customize that to our needs for our employees, including making cost saving measures, decisions that we would be able to do on our own if we continue to offer self-funded. Option two is the ten year internal loan that was presented to council at the last council meeting. You can see there the difference between option one and option two. It's about a 1.2 million dollar difference. So about 1.2 million dollar savings to the city by continuing to maintain our own self insured versus going to the AWC option. Option three, it would be whatever variation the council could potentially look at. Maybe, you know, it could be instead of a ten year payback, it could be a five year payback, which would require an even heftier increase in premiums over that five year period to pay that back. Because the 6.5 million dollar number doesn't change. So obviously, the shorter time period you put that over, the bigger the payment over that shorter period of time. Anyway, so those are some of the options that council could consider. I would still recommend as the city manager that we do option two, which is the self-funded over the ten year period. It is a loan. It's not, it's not a, it's not a buyout. This is recapitalizing the fund with about, I think about two and a half million of that going to fill the negative balance that's there. And then having another four to four and a half million there in reserve, which is required to maintain a self-funded fund and program as required by state law. Again, that money would be there for the future to help pay claims, those kinds of things. But that full 6.5 million will get paid back with interest, four percent, to the Economic Development Fund. There is the possibility we could look at not having all 6.5 million come out of the Economic Development Fund. But in looking at those and talking about those with staff, a lot of those have very significant reasons for why they need to be left alone right now. Whether it's there's future projects coming in, or they don't have significant balances in there. Or there are some funds that have balances, but they're not liquidated cash. They're in investments. And those investments are making more money in interest right now in those investments than what you would get through this alternative. So again, city staff, looking at all the alternatives, we still stand behind the recommendation that we provided last meeting of this. But these are alternatives the council can consider if that's what you would like to do. Here's some of the pros and cons related to those options and alternatives. I won't read through the slide for you, but we can make this available. We can attach it to the packet and we can email it out to council here before the end of the meeting so that you have these available to you. At the end of the day, the 2.5 negative number has to be paid for regardless of what option or alternative you look at. And if you're going to continue to offer a self-funded insurance program, you have to have reserves in the bank to be able to do that, which is the other four million. These are the pros and cons of option two. And then again, depending on what other alternatives the council wants to look at in option three, you can ask those questions. But know that we have limited ability to make changes with those union contracts. All those have to be negotiated, and we're trying to balance all of that too as we move forward. Key next steps will be council's decision on the inter fund loan review and approval. And that will be on the agenda for next Monday night. We are looking at moving forward with annual enrollment. Those meetings start in November. And so having a lot of this decided beforehand helps us answer a lot of questions that staff has. And right now, the main question that most staff has, from what I'm hearing, is is that security going to be there? And, you know, we've presented to staff the proposed increases in premiums. Right now, I think everyone is understanding of that. And I think staff would like the stability and the commitment from us as an employer of continuing to offer this benefit in the way that was proposed previously. And again, this will be something that we'll be continuing to working on through negotiations with union contracts this year and next year as we go through those contract renewal discussions. So with that, I would open up for questions. I don't know if staff has anything to add there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time. I will say, you know, this isn't, this isn't one of the major issues I wanted to deal with in my first couple of months as a city manager for the city of Pasco. But this is an important component for us as an employer to our employees. And so to some degree, I'm kind of glad that I was here with my experience to be able to help work through this with staff and hopefully with the council as well. I haven't been as focused on how it happened as to just fixing it going forward and making sure it doesn't happen again in the future. But looking at what I've seen so far, looking at the history and those kinds of things, it is a combination of different things that really took place over the last probably twelve to eighteen months. You know, you go back and look at the historical balances of this fund, and it was pretty stable for a while. There wasn't a lot of red flags. And, but those things came together pretty quickly to create the situation that we're in. And it overtaxed the fund beyond what it had the capability of handling. So now the question is, is how we right the ship and get it back set and stable? And I think that this proposal that we've put before you is the way forward.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Yeah, I know Mayor Pro Tem Graham and myself, being business owners, a lot of times when things arise, you're not happy about where you're at. But again, I appreciate you coming with it. Now let's just fix it. So I know, I'm saying, in business owner, you sometimes are presented with the problem. A lot of times it's not your fault, it's somebody else's. But how do we fix it? How do we move on? How do we have stability but keep the, our employees that are, you know, make the city run? So, yeah, I believe that the council will pick the right decision. And again, I think we're all up to the task. So with that, let's start off with Councilman Harpster.
So the first question I have is related to the graph that Ms. Garcia sent a week ago or so. And I've looked at it more times than I care to admit. I think I understand. I just want to clarify. The, so the end of that twenty, as of last calendar year 24, we had, looks like, almost 700,000 in that fund. That's correct? I'm reading that. And then projecting by the end of this year, it's going to be the negative 2.4. Okay, okay.
I think a lot of it has to do with the double payment of claims. So we had the backlog of claims from probably 24, all of 24 that weren't getting paid. And so we had to pay those 2024 claims at the beginning of 2025 in addition to our ongoing 2025 claims, and that exhausted out that account.
One of my questions is, I don't understand the loan repayment expense. If, you know, the city from one of its funds is loaning another fund, I would think there wouldn't be an expense. Does that make sense? So can you understand why there is an expense?
So it's all internal? It is internal, but you're taking it from a fund with one specific purpose to another fund. Basically, if it was all within general fund, it would be okay. But the Economic Development Fund is not a general fund. And so by state law, in order to avoid gifting laws and violations, because we're changing the purpose and the use of that, there is a interest payment that has to be made. So that's that four percent interest payment that has to be made in order to comply with state law.
Okay. And then you answered my second or third question already, which was why was taking from that fund the best option as opposed to a different fund? But with loaning funds from the Economic Development Fund, is that going to delay any economic development projects, any amount of time? Or hold anything up until that amount is repaid?
Great question. And that was a concern that I had that I visited with staff on because I didn't want to delay any economic development investment. And the response has been, no, it will not delay any projects over this ten year period. We will have sufficient funds still in the Economic Development Fund to keep our current projects moving forward and some money to continue to do other economic development projects. And the benefit is complying with state law and paying that four percent interest is you will actually have more money returned to the Economic Development Fund than the way you're borrowing to benefit future economic development projects.
What's the current balance of the Economic Development Fund-ish?
Staff will find an answer for you. Keep going with the questions and we'll find an answer for you here in the next few minutes.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilman Harpster. Let's go on to Mayor Pro Tem Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I made, you know, most of my comments last week. I know, Mr. Stewart, you know, you were on the road, but yet with us. And I appreciate you coming back today and not only for us, but just for the public, giving a more detailed presentation and kind of the background. And I also, like I said last week, just appreciate staff bringing it to our attention so that we can fix it. And also thanks for your attitude of just being the new guy and coming in and not looking in your rearview mirror and saying, here's our situation, let's fix it and let's go forward. And I think that's, you know, I think that's the attitude of this council as a whole, just wanting to make stuff happen. So really appreciate it. Thank you. this council as a whole, just wanting to make stuff happen. So really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that comment. Uh, was there anything else that you wanted to say, Harold Stewart?
I just wanted to give Jesse some time. We have some plans that we need to make for uh 4th of July next year. I know it's a little early. We haven't gotten past we haven't even gotten past Halloween yet. But um, next year's 4th of July is a special one. And 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 so uh, we'll have some questions that we're not gonna ask you to answer tonight, but we want you to be prepared at next Monday's meeting. So I'll turn some time over to Jesse about what's he's concluded. I don't have anything further for this.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, sorry, we're talking about sprinkled billouts next week, but 4th of July is what's coming up on Parks and Rec's schedule. So lots going on next year. Um, so two, two things with 4th of July. And again, not looking for an answer this evening. We can revisit uh next meeting or the following meeting as well. Uh, first one, we received notice from our uh, from our fireworks manufacturer that they are expecting about a 20% increase in prices next year. Um, so for the show that we normally run, that's about $30,000. So that increase is about $6,000. So the first thing to think about will be if we want to amend the budget to increase that, or if we want to look at shortening that show or reducing the size of the firework shells. Uh, if previous Fire Chief Bob Gear is here, he'd probably do both. So at least you guys can maybe choose one or the other in that in that circumstance. So. Um, and and then secondly, um, next year is uh America's 250th anniversary or the semi-quinsentennial. Just look that up. That's a real word, I promise you, semi-quinsentennial. Uh, and many uh federal, state and local organizations are planning on enhancing their 4th of July celebration. Um, so if that's something we wanted to consider as well, that's honestly probably gonna be another budgetary consideration. But more importantly, a lot of those extra activities, whether it might be a drone show or we want to add a musical performance at the uh fireworks show or something, that we'd need to consider booking those sooner than later to in order to do those things. So. So two areas for the 4th of July, um, for you to consider. If you have any additional questions, any details, please let the city manager know or we can discuss them next time. So appreciate the time this evening though.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So I'm not seeing any other.
Just a question on that. Can we, can the city work to secure sponsorships to cover the increased cost or if we want to, you know, kind of expand the?
Yeah, uh, um, in our sponsorship guide, 4th of July has always been one that we've included as a potential sponsorship. Um, and it's not one that's been heavily supported as far as in the fireworks area, but we have had smaller sponsors like Sponsor the Battle, the Bands and some other things. But that's just one of the events. I'm not sure why um we haven't received a lot of sponsorship like we do for specific other events. But it's definitely something in the guide, definitely something we're marketing.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So that jumps us to number eight, executive session. And so oh, okay. Uh, executive session to consider site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase of lease if likelihood that disclosure would increase price per RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1, subsection B, and discussion with legal counsel about legal risk or current or proposed actions per RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1, subsection I. Looks like we need 60 minutes for that. And I guess we're gonna probably take a six-minute break. Uh, just so we can have the time correct. So we'll take a six-minute break and then we'll be back at 9:40. All right. There's 18, 16 minutes. All right. So we will now take a break and then go on to exec session. All right. Well, it is 9:55. We are back from exec session. And with that, we are on number nine, which is adjournment. Thank you, everybody.